The May 17, 2017 Planning Commission meeting order. First item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. I have a motion to adopt. So move.
Second.
Second. Next item on the agenda or the minutes, we are going to move that to the next meeting. We're still in the process of completing some of the amendments from the last two weeks. Make sure the thorough lack of rejection, move that to the next meeting. Motion. Move that to the next meeting. So move.
Second.
Next item on the agenda is a public comment session. And I'll go over a few of the rules with regards to tonight's presentation, application, and your ability to talk in the public comment session. This first public comment session is just for general comments. If you have something regarding planning, what you think is useful for the commissioners to hear, we'd be glad to hear that. I'd ask you to keep your comments to more than three minutes. If you are here for a particular application, there will be a public comment session for that particular application. So if you want to hold off, then that's probably the appropriate time. However, I'm going to open up the first public comment session for general comments. I'd ask you to state your name, the district you're from, please.
Bill, I want to say Bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's begin every good meeting with a commercial or two. The 27th of this month at Castleton Festival Hall, there'll be a Starry Sky presentation featuring the master, the starter, and so forth. Everybody is welcome, it's free. And on the 10th of June, there'll be an open house at Gallatonia Farm on the solar panels. As you know, we put the first solar panels on in the co-op in the county. And they're trying to do a second co-op now, the first one being quite successful. So that's the 10th of June. Two items for a commercial. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll now close the public comment session and move on to the next item on the agenda under old business. This is the OR Special Use 170303. Ms. Kaiser, any update on that?
She, Mrs. Ken Walliger, has decided to formally withdraw her application for a family apartment, so it doesn't need to be heard any longer by the state.
No action, we can take it as is. To be no other old business, I'll move on to the new business of applications. First application under new business is Fletcher Festivals, Special Use 170401. Ms. Kaiser, for, see Mr. Fletcher is here, but I'll turn to you for comments, please.
Bill Fletcher from Thornton Hill LLC, owner of the property located at 4137 Sperryville Pike, Sperryville, Virginia, consisting of 151 acres, tax map 39, parcel 3A, zone agriculture in the Piedmont District, desires a special exception permit to use this parcel, also known as the Stewart Field Track for Festivals. The use is allowed pursuant to Code 170-36H with additional standards under 170-52 and
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. We're opening up the public comment. The applicants are here. Gentlemen, who was yours?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Fletcher. My son and I reside in the Piedmont District of Thornton Hill Farm. This comes about, this application comes about because we've had events on what we call the Stewart Field since probably about 1943. And I can't really remember that we had any problems during that time. I mean, I'm sure some people got drunk and passed out, but besides that, not much. A gentleman contacted me, Ron Nickum, and he wanted to have a Renaissance Festival on the property and have people stay there for a couple of days. I don't know whether it's going to fly or not. And people like to want to have weddings there. I've had three people ask me for weddings there. I think Richie Burke's daughter's getting married there, and another, Fornell got married there, and probably a couple others over the years. But this property is pretty conducive to this. We've had as many as probably 10,000 or 12,000 people there on a day event. We've had two-day events and never had any problem. I've talked to the highway department about this location a minute there, about a week ago, and he said he'd like to have the entrances expanded. I think they're wide enough, but the highway department's always got to tell you something. So we're probably going to be, I'm meeting with, you know, the excavator on Friday to see how much it would cost and talk about that, and the fire department, everybody make sure it works out. Might eventually put a beacon up there if people, a lot of people wanted to have weddings there or something. But I'd probably build a beacon along the lines or something, I could store tractors under or something. I'm glad to answer any questions you have. Everybody definitely did more in Rat Pack to bring business or tourism in, so that's what I'm trying to do. And I also thank you with hopefully aid in the survivability of our farm, which has been in my family, or our family, for over 200 years. And also in the effort of full disclosure, it's owned as an LLC. My son is the majority shareholder, and I retain a certain amount of it, but I'm the manager of it. And it's some kind of tax deal, so we don't have to pay the state taxes. But I think Jamie would do what's right on the property, and I'm going to try to do what's right. If you have any questions, I'm glad to try to answer them.
You may add some, Mr. Fletcher, after we get into discussion.
Okay.
Reserve that time.
Okay. Fine.
I'm now going to open up this application for public comment. That'll be heard from the applicant. 170401 is now open for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Dave Conne, I'm from Stonewall District. I think Bill kind of asked me, well, maybe I would be against this and then you would all recommend in favor of it. But I have to say that, you know, this is a use that Bill said that's been kind of going on with the races and various other events for many, many years. It's certainly conflated by the zoning ordinance because it's in there. It has to get this permit, but I guess my question would be, if it's there at that location where there's not too many contiguous neighbors, and it's right on one of the two primary highways in the county, if you can't do it there, where would be a better place for something like this? So I think that assuming it meets all the requirements, the general standards, I think you could put some hours of operation subject to those kind of reasonable conditions, I think it's a good idea, and I think it ought to be recommended for approval. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Page One, Jackson District. I support the idea as well. I think the county needs a tourism draw, it needs an attraction, and I think you saw providing a good idea. I think we should support it. It'll help, it finances a lot.
Anyone else? I now close Fletcher Application Festival, 170401, and turn to the commissioners. Gentlemen, obviously this is in my district, I'll just make a few comments before I turn to you all, questions of the applicant. I know you are familiar with this property, likely, I'm really familiar with the property. I think, but I'd like to relay to the commissioners, just from someone who has some knowledge of that, there's been a lot of history there, history of success, I should say, with the horse races, in the Cougar Festival, the July Fourth Festival, which is in its 11th year this year, and has proven to be a successful fundraiser for the fire departments. And I would say at the, at no expense, the Fletcher family has been more than gracious with regards to making that property available for some of the nonprofits that need that kind of help here in the community to raise money. I'm going to say too, with that facility, if you have it, and you need to take a trip in there, it's a beautiful piece of property, has a natural amphitheater kind of looks, natural parking areas, and again, I know this simply because I'm heavily involved with the July Fourth Celebration, or I think County July Fourth Celebration, I'm the chair of that committee. And safety ingress and egress, the people that attend that are very important topics, safety plans with regards to that event. I say all that, I think there's a possibility for this property to be used as proposed with some discussion about maybe, you know, the events themselves, hours, maybe the number of events and so forth. Now probably we'll have a couple of questions as we move along. But I say that it's just kind of my foundation moving forward with regards to the event. Mr. Burke, can I start on the following?
Sir, yes. It seems to me what we are here to do is to kind of legitimize a past and what seems to be very reasonable use of the property. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't see any problems with it. If there had been problems with it, they probably would have surfaced and shown themselves by now. And inasmuch as this type of use is something that we are trying to encourage and have more of in the county, this would seem, as I would say, another arrow in our quiver.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Brown, move to you, sir.
I was just wondering what the neighbors think of it.
Ms. Kaiser, are we, any calls?
No. All the neighbors were notified, and we've heard absolutely nothing.
Mr. Brown's had a question, Mr. Fletcher. Any comments from the neighbors, Mr. Fletcher?
I don't have any good problem. I didn't call them all up and ask them about it, but you know, if they have a complaint about the event, they came to me and we tried to get it straight.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, obviously, it's a property that is very well suited for these types of activities. Thirty-one events a year, I guess eight large, eight mid-size, fifteen small. Probably can support that number, although I think it doubles in the details on that maybe as a reference to a contract that you're going to do, I guess specify some obligations of those who are going to rent the property. I don't know if it's appropriate with, you know, that contract, we see that contract, to see what the specifications are in there. I know they're listed here with respect to noise and lighting and hours and portability and cleanup and everything, or if we just simply put those as restrictions, although that's a little bit more of a severe word. So I think it's a general comment, but I've seen this board committee put those kinds of things in writing just to make sure they're, if they're the contract, then maybe that's what we refer to, I don't know. And the only other thing was the reference to VDOT, I guess, the, I know Mr. Fletcher's got it on his to-do list. That'll be, entrance will be enhanced. Maybe the committee needs to see that before we can vote on when we're up or down, but just looking at it. At 10,000 feet, those are my initial comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I agree, it seems like in principle a great site for this. We've had a lot of historical success there. It's remote, good access to a state road. I agree with all those things. But I also think we do need to look at a few of these details. And I guess my thoughts sort of fit into categories, both related to what I see as provisions in our ordinance. First generally has to do with the notion of overnight, I guess, because, you know, I know we're looking at events here and limited number, but the numbers that were thrown out in terms of numbers of people, if you take them to the extreme, which I think is what we would be approving, would constitute 87,000 people accessing this property in a year. So, I mean, I do think we need to kind of look at some boundary conditions. I know we have a great history, a great track record here, but this approval goes with the property, not just with the people. So I think it's important that we, that we look at that, especially with respect to the overnight facilities. We do have ordinance, I know they haven't been referenced here, but there is a whole separate ordinance on campground and motorhome facilities that has requirements for electricity and some of those things, many of which probably wouldn't be desirable here, but I think it's important that we, for me at least, to understand better what the plan is for the overnight, because I don't think any of these, at least what I'm aware of, some of the examples that have been given about fairgrounds and the like, and some of these events that have been there, apart I know, have not included large numbers of people overnight. I'm sure that people have stayed overnight a long time, but that's one area that I think we need to flesh out. The other is with respect to the events themselves, I find the ordinance as written to be not really, doesn't seem to really envision this. The way I read the ordinance, it seems to imagine that each individual event will be somehow considered, because, you know, at least items B through F refer to, you know, a plan for providing food and water, information about the names and financial backing of property owners and the people promoting it. And each of those things, it seems to me, is imagining an individual event. So as I try to reconcile this, it seems to me there's two paths we could take with this that I would like to see us at least consider. One would be, as Mr. Wazinski suggested, that we come up with some provisions that we feel would satisfy these requirements, and that we ask that those be made part of the standard contract language, in which case we'd sort of be delegating that kind of approval as part of the condition. The other, which seems far less workable to me, would be that we somehow maintain some review of individual events of some certain scale, which seems less workable and less desirable from about every perspective, both from standpoint of the applicants as well as our administrative duties. But I do think the level of specificity, right now, we have kind of an assurance that the contract will include provisions dealing with these things, but since those provisions are important to what we are to consider in the approval, it seems to me we need to have a voice in what those requirements actually are. And then we would not be fulfilling our responsibility with respect to the mandate if we simply said, you know, as long as you work that out with the applicants, we're good. So those two exceptions, I think there's a, you know, I think there's a clear path to making this work.
I think we are at a vantage here that this property has a history that goes back many years, that it has worked, and the topography of the business is made such that it helps to shield the property from road, has limited neighbors. And most counties have some type of property, usually it's owned by the public or some type of nonprofit organization. And every county around us that is used for outside events, Madison County has their fairgrounds, Culpeper has their fairgrounds, Fall Gere has a fairgrounds, Warren County, Page County, everybody around us has some type of outdoor facility like this. I think the terminology that maybe Mr. Fletcher used in his presentation kind of may not have been quite clear. I think probably when he was talking about a two-day event, I don't think he was talking about a two-day event running 24 hours a day. I think probably more of an event that closed down and then started again in another day. And those kind of events have been held there. The Cooter Festival was, I believe, a two-day event, and that closed down at night and then started that day, too. We've had other applications that were somewhat similar to this. We did the Chris Miller property up there, major difference area, that we used the old barn up there, which was basically an event center in that barn. And that has worked out, and, you know, I think he has to come each time he has an event, have Richie to come out and inspect it because of the safety concerns of fire there. But other than that, you know, we gave him free reins to have events there. And there's no facilities here, and there may be some type of pavilion there, multi-use pavilion for farm and pavilion use in the future. And I think if we go to the point of doing a cutoff time at night, addressing the lights, addressing the cutoff of the music, require the improvements for VDOT, all of our applications, particularly for the tourist homes, is subject to VDOT and Health Department approval, and the applicant takes that and gets the approvals of any improvements they have, and they move forward. And I'm not looking into micromanaging an application for every event that comes up out there. And I think common sense here, the size of this property and what's going on there gives us a lot of assurance that we can do a application here that, you know, gives Mr. Fletcher and his family some flexibility here to have events like they've had in the past. But we don't need to make this thing any more complicated than it needs to be.
I do have one question, Mr. Fletcher. With regards to the number of events and attendees, how did you come up with those? Is that just based on some experience?
Well, I've had like five people call me in the first three months of this year about having weddings and Renaissance Festival. And concerning Mr. Light's question, it's a good one. And I don't know the answer to it yet. The field is sloping and have a lot of topography to it. Where I'd like for the overnight people to stay is there's a little jut, it's called the Henry Horton Field. I'd love to tell you the story, but it's probably not important and not appropriate to tell it now, but it's a great story of gravitas. I'm planning to put the vehicles or anybody wants to stay overnight down in that section. Now I may have to do something with the road. The actual road from Culpeper to Little Washington went right through that area in 1833 and also 1845. But I'm going to try to do what's best for the property and best for the event while reducing the impact on my neighbors. And one of the reasons I like this little place, if you make with property where the dog kennel is, there's a stream that cuts off Mason Mountain through there. This little piece of property is there, it's hidden from the road, the only way you'd see it, and it's probably got 40, 50, 30 to 40 acres in there, you could park people around there. I don't know what the health partner restrictions, but I've got two bells on the property and electricity on two locations, one at the barn and one at the top of the hill, where you go in at the Fourth of July. So I think we've got it pretty covered. And I've got a pretty good agricultural operation going on. I've got enough tractors and things to cover any small thing that would have to happen there. If I had a problem, I'll have to fix it, but I can't, we've got 74, 75 years of experience. And outside the, having a torrential rain or hurricane the night before, the property drains pretty well, but if we do get a big rain or something, I might have to relocate the parking or something like that. And I'd like to have the availability to do it. I don't want to be obtrusive. And I don't know whether I might have one event there or 50 events there. I have no idea. I'm just, this is mainly coming about from discussions I've heard from people in the community, wouldn't it be a nice, that's a beautiful place to have a wedding? And then I've said, well, I better not let everybody have weddings there because that violates the ordinance. You know, if I just have wedding after wedding there every weekend, so I said, well, and I don't think weddings are obtrusive. And where most people do the wedding is closer to my house than any of my neighbors, and that's, it's still a quarter mile away where I put, Cooter Park's closest to Woodbell for people that stayed for his event, if I remember correctly. This is on the side closest to my house. So if anything goes wrong there, I'm going to get up, I'm going to go down, and I want to throw it back.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Or assume my son's doing it. He's probably more able than I.
Gentlemen, any questions, Mr. Fletcher, before we dig into the details here?
Maybe I could ask a follow-up with respect to the numbers, and I know, I think I can guess the answer to this, but with respect to the overnight and the camping and RVs that you referred to here in the application, perfect location where recreational vehicles for overnight camping, earlier you made reference to a group of hikers interested in outdoor camping. What is the, it seems like there are multiple things here. I understand the sort of daily event, but the, I think it's the multiple references to camping that I'm just getting a little, forgive me.
The guy involved in the National Health Foundation went down to my fire pit area, and he said, we'd love to have a dinner down here. And so I thought maybe I should throw it in. Now, do a lot of people camped all over my property? No. But if they have a Renaissance Festival and are, you know, I'd like to see a community nonprofit day there, or weekend, or Bluegrass Festival, or something like that there, but you know, and I'm not trying to avoid the question, I'm just trying to say, I don't know what the demand may be, it may be that nobody calls. Because whenever somebody calls for something, it's incumbent on me to make sure it's done right, or if we go down there and they want to have this festival, well, I've got to spread gravel. And the estimate for the gravel down there is like 2,500 tons. Well, do you think I want to go buy 2,500 tons of gravel for an event I might get $2,000 to $3,000 for? Probably not. So, and I don't want to put roads all over the property. I might put, if things go really well, I might put a road or skim of gravel down through there, and if it gets money, I'll probably take a bale of eight and unroll it to tighten the ground up. I don't want to lose money on doing this. And a load of gravel is what, $500, $600 a load? So I'm not, I don't think- So I'm not, I don't think this is going to be, I'd definitely use a fifth of it. But I don't want, and the damn application costs $500 and I'm tight. I don't want to come out here and file $500 applications and people to come in and decide they want to do the wedding here because maybe another event is washed out or the electricity breaks. You know, it's an advantage. But I can say, yeah, you can go use my field. But I don't, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, maybe we can get a little closer here. Let's, maybe we can identify what we would, what we want to know before moving forward of this as to D-DOT entrance, what that meeting is going to be like, what that's going to require, as far as that. You know, before we get into the, I think someone said the devil's in the details here. And maybe we need to look at that. Are there any outstanding things that are just on our mind and we, not necessarily deal stopper, we need to clarify before we get into some of this times and...
So I think, I think Mr. White, a point about getting into a large number of campers there, overnight conditions there. And that's somewhat of the ordinary of the applications that we've seen here over the years. I think there is support if you have an event there that is a 5,000, 8,000 number of events, where you may need four or five people spending the night there for security, particularly with a car show or something like that, tractor show, whatever, where you would need some basic overnight security. And there's probably a number of campers that, you know, five, ten, something like that, that would be justified for a degree of security for the property. But I think beyond that, I think if it's a two-day event, the people need to go to bed and breakfasts in the tourist homes.
Well, if that's, if that's the vision, I don't have any concern. Just in looking just at what's written here, you know, it may be interpreted differently.
And then as, as the future goes on, if it turns out that he has a demand for something else, then he would have to come back and adjust the camping issue. I think when you move into a camping issue, you know, you have to look at, you know, more of the water supply, maybe storage disposal.
There are very specific requirements.
I think just, you know, that, that needs, I think that is not, we can try.
Block that off or block that out. I, I agree that that should be our, our goal, I think, to block camping or...
Yeah, just a basic number of five, five campers, something like that with security. And then start and back up, you know. I think the times that he proposes, you know, what, end of the event at 10:00. And is that better than here? End of 10:00, lights off at 11:00, a little earlier than 7:00 AM in the morning. Any portable lights would have to be downshelled and they would go off at 11:00. And then subject to D-DOT approval in the entrance. I think that's, and we agree upon the structure of the events and the size of it, I think that comes up.
I do agree with Mr. White that it would be good if there was just a boilerplate contract document and took into consideration a lot of these things that Mr. Fletcher is already out on in the application.
Mr. Fletcher is a very renowned attorney and I've never seen him write a contract for anybody that had a hold on it and writes something for himself. And he is not going to be a whole man and it's going to be a good contract that will stand up and kick anybody. But take all the liability, you can put it on people who come in. I don't think you're going to see his contract. I've never had seen anybody else's contract.
The...
He's going to cover the sewer and the portage jobs and liability insurance and all this. We don't see Quikbone's contract in the contract on events.
Look, it's a different situation that is indoor, so it's got more natural constraints to it. And again, I'm trying, not trying to be any more bureaucratic or difficult than necessary, but I am looking at a very explicit statement of the...
I'm not showing you the contract.
Well, okay. I suggest that you show the contract, but...
I'll, I'll bet that's probably...
Well, what is, what, what is incumbent on us, I think, whether it be whatever means it takes, these are the requirements that we are to consider in looking at an event. Who's backing it? It even says, you know, 200 attendees expected maybe required to post bond to ensure satisfactory compliance. There are explicit standards that need to at least make sure that we are, you know, we can't simply say those requirements that are in the ordinance on us, we simply relegate that responsibility to Mr. Fletcher. It just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like what the ordinance calls for. And I don't know that it needs to see the contract, but I think it should be in the form of the conditions that we would expect to see included in that contract so that our responsibilities as per items B through F are satisfied. I don't care to see the contract, it's not my business. These items are our business, it seems to me.
Chairman, could I say something? Just a minute. Well, I think it will clarify that quick.
No, I personally welcome Mr. Conick's statement.
Before I, just giving Mr. Conick, you're not sure if it brings some value. Anyone else could watch to Mr. White's question.
I, I do feel that Mr. White has reason on his side here. I feel that inasmuch as this is something that we are providing a recommendation for, we ought to have some, at least general parameters as to what we are recommending in terms of, I'm not sure what that is, but it would be gross numbers, times, lights out, all of the things that you mentioned in your proposal.
Yeah, I don't think it's, everything's been mentioned, it's just the way they're mentioned in the application is in an open-ended, will be addressed. And I think for us, we are to be considering that in a way that, that specificity of the application doesn't yet allow it. Mr. Conick.
Oh, thanks. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say in the answer to what Mr. White wrote, I think he's sort of got a fundamental misunderstanding of what the ordinance says. Because once you, first of all, you all just recommend it, and I think these general standards, if you recommend it and then the board of supervisors approves it, subject to these general things, the way the additional standard section works or those, they apply to any event that happens. And once the special permit, or excuse me, special exception permit is granted by the board of supervisors after you make your recommendation with the overall sort of general parameters of it, then it's up to the zoning administrator to make sure these things that are in whatever section that is, A through G or H or whatever it is, all those little subsections. Every, when they have an event, they have to get the approval that they need to get and make, clarify that they're going to have to make whatever it is, whatever's required in all those subsections through the zoning administrator. And the proof of that is, next to the last laundry, I think, that says the zoning administrator's got the authority that if it's only once every three years, the zoning administrator can just approve it without getting special exception permit at all. So I think once, once you approve it, I don't, I don't think, really, I don't think you, certainly the planning commission can't waive those standards that are in there. Those are the standards for it, period. And, and once you approve, give them the special exception permit, every time an event happens, they've got to, if they have to have a bond, if there's going to be that many people and they have to get a bond, they have to bring the bond in to show to the zoning administrator and get that approval each time. If there's going to be a wedding with 50 or 60, they have, they have to notify the zoning administrator. And you could put that as a condition and take care of all these concerns that you've got. Make it subject to Health Department where they're going to have campers, non-self-contained or they're going to have sewage problems or whatever. You just say, well, then the Health Department's got to approve whatever it is, if and when that should arise. And that takes care of it. Because otherwise, you're, what, the planning commission is going to have another meeting every, like what Mr. Fletcher said, that's not really a reasonable, I don't think interpretation of it, that they might come here every single time and pay $500 for every event.
Thank you. So thank you for that clarify. And I think I tried to even write this, I, I, it sounds like you agree that the way this is written talks about these things for individual events. My, I would be surprised if Mr. Fletcher's application imagined coming in and sharing these details and engaging with his zoning administrator at each event. If so, then I have misunderstood. But to me, again, there's one, there's two tracks. There's that track, which is each time there's an event, there's some sharing of the plan and some understanding with somebody that these items are meant. Or we have general parameters that are baked into the permit that allow them to do it as long as it's consistent with the parameters without seeking any further involvement. So I'm not sure where we are, but Mr. Conick just articulated what I consider to be the more burdensome path that I didn't think we were looking for here. But I would, perhaps if this would be a question to get to...
Yeah, I can mention something. When you talk about bar, you know, if I do it for one person, I've got to do it for all. And I have to do it for the fire department. And bonds are pretty expensive. I mean, they could cost $2,500, $5,000 a bar on all the bonds I've got. And I don't want to add, I, I'm doing it on my property. There's an inherent risk to it. Uh, yeah, but you can't waive all the liability. If something happened on the Fourth of July event, I'm going to hit up, get hit up. I understand that. I'm going to get the people to sign a note or something like that that isn't obtrusive. But I've got to have the ability to negotiate with these people. Unless you want to have, for example, it's the fire department and make them put up a, what, a $25,000 bond, make sure the property is cleaned up properly? And then they've got to put it in and all that? I don't think you want that. And also for the camping, I'm not supplying water and sewer to these people. They aren't going to want to stand in the middle of that field with the chiggers and the ticks for any longer than they got to. I know I wouldn't. But it's whatever you all please to do, but I, I don't feel that you asking for my copy of my contract, that's proprietary.
No one's...
I, I said, I don't mind putting in a dendromary contract of what your restrictions or requests are, and I would do that. But the monetary and all, that's not your...
No.
And I didn't mean to be so abrupt about it, but I, I don't give my work product. If you want to buy it, I'll sell it to you here. But I'm not giving it to you.
For the record, I won't do lots of them for that.
I was the one that said it, and I, I understand your...
Major discussion. So just, just out of curiosity, now, how does the fire department doing that every year, if you can do one event every three years, how is the department doing the Fourth of July now, legally? Does that, I don't think it makes a difference if it's nonprofit. But I think she does.
It's, it's nonprofit and that is how that was explained from the beginning because we thought there might be a process or a permitted process that might need to be pursued. And I don't remember the particulars in that career and level of care and it's not in discussion at all. But if you're surrounded around being a nonprofit, I don't think the ordinance makes a difference between nonprofits or nonprofits.
Yeah, it does, I think. I think, well...
You have a limited number of events.
Yeah.
John Henry issued that was, whether it was nonprofit or nonprofit.
Yeah.
The fact that it was a nonprofit, the difference, I mean, you have a couple of legal people set.
See, this refers to for-profit use restriction. And the challenge, and I wish the ordinance weren't written this way, but it is, and now, I think if anything, I may be more confused than I was before, frankly, with Mr. Conick's explanation. Because I'm still struggling with whether, the basic question of whether, if we recommend approval of something and the supervisors agree, are we teeing it up in a way that requires Mr. Fletcher to come in with each event or are we not? That, to me, is a very, very basic question. I thought that the objective here was to reach a, an understanding that would, that would prevent this coming for each event. Mr. Conick's interpretation, and I think it's a reasonable one, and he, but I suggest that these requirements don't allow for that, in which case then I agree that there's no point in our talking about it because someone's wanting to see each one of these plans and deal with the things that are hard to pull at you.
Well, I think we should, I think we should do the parameters, the shell of it, as we talked about, the way you intended, send it to the supervisors. And if they want to put some curtains in it, they can. And they'll have counsel there with them and they can decide how much content it needs to put on.
To me, that's the, we can figure out those details.
Well, we can just send it on to the, to the board of supervisors with no recognition. Let them do everything. How about that, John? Yeah, it sounds wonderful.
John, do you have something?
No.
Send a, Al, is that...
Well, I think that's, if you all want to do that, we, we start with, you know, maybe I say start with the, the times and the number of events are acceptable, the size of events are acceptable, and D-DOT approval, and, and send that to the board. So, so I guess you would look to structure a motion that say that support approval and I guess, I don't, this is your district, this is...
I understand how we make sure you're not even a commentary about that also when it goes to...
What, did you have a district?
No.
It's not rooted, I'm a district, that's for sure. I don't need, need commentary to change that.
Mr. Chairman, I have to say, I'm sorry, but I feel like the question about the, the conditions under which these provisions in, you know, the additional standards for field parties do or don't need to be considered for each event, I think is a, is a very fundamental question and that I don't think we have a clear answer on. I, it may be Mr. Conick's interpretation that we can't derive generic standards. And so I, I don't know, I, I...
Excuse me, I didn't say that.
Well, I guess, I didn't mean to say, we can derive generic standards, but there would still need, the question I think at hand is whether there would still need to be an event-specific application that is brought before the zoning administrator. And that, to me, I think is still a fundamental problem.
I think we will leave that to our, to county attorney and board of supervisors. And I don't think that's being unfair to them or to us. We can debate that all night and, you know, I don't have the law degrees, planning degrees that...
I do believe that, John, each event is going to have its own impact on traffic, safety, maybe a little justice option, we will. And the requirements for the safety plan, if you will, we put together one of those every year for the Fourth of July, how we get people out in the event of emergency. And so we know that. That's template we use every year and tweak it with regards to attendance, any other activities that might go, come down there. A wedding that has 150 people versus a crowd that's 8,000 people, that template is apples and oranges. I could tell you from, I know a little bit about safety. So something like that, I don't know, we need to be very clear, certain aspects that need to be... Certain aspects that need to be reviewed each event, and that's the zoning administrator. To leave that up, for us not to have a few parameters on that here, um... It may wind up just being open-ended on the other end.
Well, there's nobody more qualified to address that than you, Gary. There's nobody more qualified to address that than me. I understand now what you're saying, now.
It seems there are two ways of looking at it. One is going forward, and one is going backwards. The problem with going forwards is that we really don't know what we are planning for and what the critical aspects of it are. The way of looking backwards is, we can see if there are mistakes, if there are problems, and something needs to be, uh... Modified. We would know better what to do and how to do it. It just seems, I feel totally out of my, uh... Any realm of expertise as to what parameters do you put on large outdoor gatherings, whereas if there are repetitive problems, that could be addressed at that point much more effectively and accurately than kind of seated-at-stuff looking forward.
I guess the benefit we have here is that we have the experience of past events there, and that addresses the events of the warriors in terms of size. There have been events there that have had 5,000, 8,000, 1,000 people there, and so, and they have worked, and there have been no issues. So, that gives us some assurance that, at least that's saying.
Well, I agree, Al.
So, that gives us assurance on the larger...
It has been done effectively before.
Right.
Well, if that's the argument, then why are we even talking about this application? Why don't we just continue to do it as we have been doing it? I guess that's where I'm misunderstanding. Apparently, presumably, we're, by approving this special use, we are taking ourselves somehow further out of the discussion for each event than we have been thus far. Right?
In the past, it's been for nonprofit. He hasn't been charging. Now, he's looking to charge. It's going to be this. In the past, it's been, he's done it out of the goodness of his heart.
Yeah, but the carnival thing is for a by nonprofit is permitted by right in agriculture and agriculture. And the festival is not. That's the difference. So, the Fire Department is permitted by right, with no...
Gentlemen, that's just for a discussion. I'll make a motion, we can move this along. I think we're all in consensus, it's not a bad idea, good location. I would make a recommendation that, uh... With conditions that we approve, especially seventeen oh four oh one, recommend approval to move that to the Board of Supervisors with the conditions of V. dot, uh... Review, which stands for take place for Mr. Fletcher. Um... The, uh... With regards to the event itself, each event that needs a special, a security plan that meets that, uh... Particular event and size, uh... The conditions that Mr. Fletcher has, uh... Has in his application with regards to the times of the events, I'm not opposed to that. I think based on the history and seeing some of them myself, like there's a reasonable condition that, uh... With regards to camping, that's a separate issue, but I... It's something that can be revisited, only with regards to, um... With regards to someone staying overnight, and I guess that numbers, again, kind of, how many people does it take for a 200 event, 200 people event versus a 8,000? How many campers might that be for folks to stay there with the security and or supporting that event? I might suggest that be limited to five. And that certainly would take care of any event, uh... Small event that might be overnight, and should address any larger event. And if it needs to be tweaked, I'd be all back before the commission. I'd like to make that motion, I'd start that with that. I have no... No heartache necessarily with the amount of events. I think these events are small, and plus, these are different locations on the farm, whether it be the fire pit, over at Thornhill, where Thornhill Hounds are. So, the impact has been spread out a little bit. I think the event, when you look at the numbers, it says, you said earlier, that you want to figure that out, and you multiply all that, you've got all this huge figure, but I, uh... I don't see it that way.
So, Mr. Sittle, so, Chairman, maybe the, uh... The zoning administrator can just read off that motion, line item.
Motion by Mr. Sittle to recommend this application, S. seventeen oh four oh one, to the Board of Supervisors with the condition of V. dot review, security plan to meet the event size, music and events to end at 10:00 P. M., to begin no earlier than 7:00 A. M., additional standards as required by the zoning ordinance, and limit overnight campers for security purposes only, limited to five people and lights off at 11:00 P. M.
I think it was five campers, yeah, and then five, five people. Clarification, Mr. Sittle? The security plan, um... Not sure exactly what you mean by that. If I look at item E, requirements, that seems referred to security. Some of the other items deal more with, it might be considered, safety and, you know, sanitation. Are you... Do you mean to exclude the kinds of things that are required in item C, for example, and only on those in D, or are you using that term somewhat more broadly?
I'm using it more broadly, uh... The old equation. I say, uh... Security plan, plan that will address either fire and rescue, uh... Response, uh... With regards to C, um... Sanitation facility, you'll be in a little bit of a...
Yeah.
And the garbage and the trash, uh... Just as it's written.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
So, this motion would supplement this, uh... Additional standards for field parties or substitute, substitute for it?
I think, what I would... How I would interpret it, I'm sorry, Mr. Sittle, if you want to answer that, but how I'm interpreting it is, the items, right from the... Even though you, in the special exception, would be part of the plan submitted associated with the application, with each event application, and tailored to that application.
That's clear.
So...
Start with revision two, or...
It's the means of assuring these would be through these plans. That's how I'm interpreting it, but, again, not with great comfort.
I mean, I think I'm going back to what Mr. Conick said, and everything that we've mentioned here, with the exception of the five campers max in the V. dot letter, that's spelled out already in this additional standard for field parties. Are we being redundant here, or...
Well, again, I think this gets to the question of whether we, as a commission, are being asked to look at this for an individual event who seems to be what the ordinance requires versus given a broader perspective. To me, what we're doing is clarifying that we, as a planning commission, don't need to be involved in each one of these, but it's based on the expectation that there is a plan that addresses these items for each event, and that is, I guess, approved by the zoning administrator? I don't know. That, to me, gets to the question, who gets those plans, and what do they do with them? I still feel like we're... We don't have this... It's not crystal clear to me.
Gentlemen, I think, let me maybe try to clarify, I think your area, as you've articulated, is exactly what I'm proposing, is to work on these additional standards as they are presented, and I'd say their security plan is of all encompassing, and keep it neater and cleaner, and keep it consistent with what's in writing for additional standards. And we recognize, uh... You know, A through F, um... And, uh... The B through F, I guess, is the... A is just a little different than what's proposed in the application as far as time and shut. I... I get back, again, I don't know... This is kind of clear to me. I'm a little confused, uh... If we have these additional standards, and there's an event, regardless of that event that falls within this application that Mr. Fletcher has proposed, these things have to be addressed, and some type of plan submitted, or assurances to, uh... That they are going to be addressed. And much like Mr. Henry or Mr. Miller's hearing guard, you know, the, every event he has, someone comes out and inspects that. And I'm not saying someone needs to go to the site every time, but there needs to be some kind of submission that is reviewed, saying, "Check the block off." Yes, we have an ingress or, you know, fire rescue plan. We have, well, you know, this place is going to be cleaned up, garbage, sanitary, all that's going to be taken care of. It's, um...
So, that is the responsibility of the zoning administrator? Is that...
Yeah.
There isn't anybody else?
Well, perhaps we could leave that to the supervisors to decide. It almost seems like the emergency coordinator might be the guy to do that, somebody who is versed in safety and, uh... Response.
I mean, it seems to me that the Sheriff's Department should be known for...
Well, exactly, something like that, and... But that's, that's something really beyond our scope, because this is a new thing, and so that there isn't a kind of protocol in place to fit into.
Well, yeah, then that, to me, is the concern, because I think the way this is envisioned is that we would be having this conversation in this body for a particular event. That's what this, that's how this is written, my, the way I read it.
I see that, well, I think it is what my interpretation...
Well, we're kind of going around the circle here.
Are we all finished with your motion?
I second you.
Okay, now you can discuss it.
Yeah.
All right, second, Mr. Henry, for the discussion.
I really do think it's, you know, falls in the area of the zoning administrator to just be the clearinghouse for this application. It's not going to come before this, you know, if it's not, if each application's not going to come before this petition, then, you know, it goes to the zoning administration office, and they're the ones that are responsible for enforcement. Uh... The sheriff might be part of that, but I don't think that they're the... I don't think you want to fragment this and say the sheriff takes this and the Health Department takes that. I think you need one, you know, you need one person of responsibility, and to me, that's going to be, and that's just a function of proving and enforcing the code.
You for discussion?
I will not prolong this, but I don't, I don't feel like we're reading a lot of things that are vaguely big.
There should almost be a separate zoning category, something like that. It's like a public, somehow public property, these kinds of, you know, but we don't have that, sure.
Well, we're going to have the zoning administrator, and that will be part of their job description.
There's a motion number four, Mr. Henry is second, there's no further discussion. Put it up for a vote, call in favor of this application moving forward to the Board of Supervisors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose. Thank you, gentlemen, please. Ms. Cazin?
Well, gentlemen, we're all... Thank you for squeezing the hour.
Glad I get you back to the most... Next item on the agenda, this, uh... New business is the Von Five Hitch, uh... 17 oh four oh three, uh... That's a special use on special exception, seventeen oh four, the wedding venue. Ms. Cazin?
This is for special use seventeen oh four oh three. The owner of the property located at 113 Kinselstone Lane in Eastville, Virginia. Two hundred and twenty-two acres, tax map forty-three, parcel forty-four, forty-five, and forty-five A. Zone to eighty for agriculture and music in the Jackson District. Desires a special use permit to use the house as a tourist home. The use is allowed pursuant to Code Section 170 dash thirty-six E with additional standards under Code Section 170 dash fifty-two and 170 dash sixty-six K of Rep. Henning County.
Yeah, it is here, it's mine, yes. If you'll come on up and address the commission, it's be at someone else's.
Okay. Do you want to come up? I heard it's taken here.
Move up here, we can hear you.
Okay.
State your name and your district.
I'm Berkeley Montalich, Jackson District. Um... In planning for the future of our farm, we had two goals. One was to keep it in our family, and the other was to keep it as a working farm, maintaining and not disturbing the natural surroundings with a negative impact to our neighbors. Um... And speaking with our neighbors, there were a few questions, I'm just going to address that right now. We do not want to do a market center or build any buildings. All activity is standing around our house, which is in the middle of the two hundred and twenty-two acres. We will not allow our guests to bring or ride ATVs, motorcycles, horses, set up fireworks, target shoot or anything noisy that will disturb the neighbors or our animals. We'll have the farm office occupied during the week, and our guest house will continue to be occupied by our business partner or someone else in the future, if he is not letting in. Um... We will return every four to six weeks and be very involved in the property, so we will have a presence on the farm. Um... We are applying the granted permission to offer our home, um... As a tourist home and wedding venue. This is a farm that's been actively hay and cattle farm since nineteen seventy-nine, when our family bought property. Two hundred and twenty-two acres, ten of which are in Culpeper County. Um... The original residence, which is the guest house as well as our house, which we built in two thousand and one, sit in the middle of the property. And we have two barns, a tennis court, and a swimming pool, all located close to the house. In the basement of the main house, which is a walkout basement, we have our home office with three employees that work for our company, and so stand window indoor systems, and that's also our farm office. Since we moved here permanently in nineteen ninety-eight, we have operated the farm ourselves. Um... We raised three boyas on this farm in this county, and as our children are moving out of the household and they're growing older, we evaluated our options for the farm and determined that in order to keep it whole and operating as a farm and rural, which is what we want, and true to its traditional rural purpose, we needed to add income to the profits from farming. Hence, our application for the operation of the main house as a tourist home and the area around the house as a wedding venue. We will also continue to produce hay, flowers, and... The tourist home has five bedrooms. We will not allow more than ten persons to rent the home at one time. We will not provide meals, so you can be able to cook in the kitchen. The road leading to the farmhouse has more than a fifty feet ride away from its entirety. We do not anticipate any noise or traffic implications for the neighborhood. Instead, we promote from a beautiful country and nature. The wedding venue, we would like to offer, uh... We would like to offer the farm and plant to them as a wedding venue. The location of these events would be between the two houses and in the center, away from all neighbors. Attend for dancing or tables could be set up on the paved tennis court, which is surrounded on tree sides, with a rotting wall, and then a forest. Any noise from music would therefore be reduced significantly as a result of these walls and natural barriers, and also, there would be a bell chime at ten o'clock at night or eleven o'clock. I can't actually remember where we were here. Um... The distance to any neighbor dwelling... The distance to any neighbor dwelling, any dwelling is at least five hundred yards in every direction. And so we don't anticipate any noise implication for the neighborhood. Those putting on the wedding are responsible for setting up and taking away within a day. They'll have to carry their own insurance and in addition, we will have our own insurance also. The entrance to the farm is on Waterford Road. It's seven tenths of a mile from Butown Road. It's twenty-six feet wide where it meets the road. Randy Norris from DDOT came and met with me and checked the entrance on floor twenty-one. We will follow the exact recommendations of raising the driveway from the entry floors to the road by one foot and removing the fence to the left of the driveway and clearing away a plant over it before looking for any guests or having any events. And we also will not have weddings on weekdays so that we don't interfere with school from work traffic. As this is an outdoor venue for the weddings, it will naturally be limited by the seasons and weather. Parking will be in designated parking areas, which is also near our house, leaving the road open for emergency vehicles. A small pond below the parking area can serve as a water reservoir for a hired apartment. We will not install any lights for these events and a temporary lighting will be pointed down in order to maintain the dark skies. It's very important to us. The entire farm is actually without any lights for this reason. With both proposed plans, we want to promote the use of those resources such as flowers from local growers, local food products, et cetera. We will have one hired, one local employee for the makers of the property and another local resident will clean and prepare the house for tourist needs. The hay operation is rented to a local farmer and neighbor. He will be making the hay and a neighbor and close friend who's been coming to this property ever since he was a baby is going to be feeding and carrying for our twenty-two cows and our doggies. Considering all of the driving that I do and have done over the years, taking my children to and from and going to the grocery store, I actually anticipate the traffic load on the farm to be less, having it be a tourist home. And as for the wedding activity, we have actually had quite a few birthday parties, private birthday parties, christening, and my son's wedding with over a hundred people. And that was actually during a hurricane. It was October two thousand and four when the hurricane in the Northeastern hit. It was about the worst circumstance you could have for parking, for traffic, for everything. We managed to do it without any problems and we have actually never had a complaint from a neighbor. I hope you will consider these two applications as our means of maintaining a beautiful farm as it is, which is used from the middle of the farm, down in all four directions, with nature being allowed to be what it is there. The natural cycles are very beautiful. I have lived there for twenty years or so. And I want to make sure that this beautiful piece of property doesn't get stolen, for example, by us to somebody who owns it. I feel very responsible to maintain this as a natural beauty spot. I anticipate that the people who visit here would hopefully also gain appreciation for the natural, beautiful Rappahannock County that we love and understand why it's important to keep farms as farms. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment session for this application. Actually, there are two applications before us. So we'll hear them together because it's the same, considering the issue that the files are here, special use and special exception, at the same time.
I'll document them, so they would just need to state which one they are.
Maybe we'll just take individualism and just clarify that. I'll open up public comment session seventeen oh four oh two, and that being the application for the, that's the tourist, or the, sorry, I lost the word.
Seventeen oh three is the tourist.
Seventeen oh two is.
Special. Seventeen oh two is the application.
Right. I'll open that up, the wedding application. Your state your name.
Hi.
And your district, please.
My name is Karen Hunt, I'm in Jackson District on Butown Road. And I just want to say first off, I don't want this to be about likability or anything. I'm not questioning if the folks, applicants are, that are asking for this proposed, I guess you're doing the special use first or the special exception, which one?
This is a special exception.
Yes, a special exception. Not questioning whether they're good people or nice people. I think they are, or they are, I believe the people who say that. I actually met Harry two years ago when he dug me out. Frank said, "Look, dig me out for the visit," and I found him to be a very nice man. My property backs up to theirs. And so I don't want this to be, this is not to me a question about whether someone is nice or likable. It's about whether what is being proposed, the special exception, whether it's an appropriate use in an agricultural zone area in this location with the number and proximity of neighbors. There are quite a few properties, I only looked at the map and just a general estimate, there looks like there's probably anywhere from twenty to at least twenty-five other homes. I don't know how many houses are occupied in there, but that's something maybe to consider. And I'm also just wanting to make sure that if this is the use that gets approved, that the impacts, you know, if there's any adverse impacts, that they can be adequately mitigated on others. Because I, you know, I like my privacy and my quiet and my peaceful enjoyment in Rappahannock County too. And I've, you know, barred owls that nest in my backyard. I wouldn't want them to be disrupted in the. I also have a question because it was with the previous application, if this proposed special exception applies to just the applicants or if it would run with the property and potentially apply to future owners. I do have some concerns. First of all, I'm not sure how much awareness there is currently because I just got notification two days ago. And one of my neighbors just got their notification today. And I've heard from several neighbors who said that they were unable to be here tonight. And then I'm looking at one of the board of supervisors here in the schedule for two PM on a Monday. And I'm just not sure that really helps facilitate public understanding and participation now. I'm not sure what you all can do about that, but I just thought I'd mention it. So if you want to do this separately, so I'm not going to talk about the tourist home, because that's going to come up next. I'm actually pretty concerned about potential adverse impacts from the proposed wedding venue. Like I said, there's a lot of adjacent homes around. Most of them are probably in Rappahannock County, but there are some in Culpeper. And since part of the property is in Culpeper, she, the applicant, mentioned is ten acres, I was just curious like how the neighbors there might be impacted. And since it's in Culpeper, but this application is being in Rappahannock, like how those neighbors are notified and how they're able to participate in the public process. In terms.
You've got about thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
You've got about thirty seconds.
All right. It seems like the application is lacking a lot of detail. But we'd like to know more about the intensity, frequency, and duration of the use. When they say they're going to do weddings from time to time and only on weekends, that doesn't tell me the number of events or what limitations there might be. Up to a hundred and fifty-person weddings, does that include the rental equipment companies, the caterers, the staff, musicians? What time limitations, there was a mention of ten or eleven PM. I have a lot of concerns about noise and amplified music because there have been some impacts in the past from activities while I haven't really ever said anything about it. I've just put the earplugs in and a pillow over my head and figured I'll get my sleep the next night. There has been kind of some regular frequency of parties over the years, particularly around holidays with fireworks and bonfires and so forth that can be a little disruptive. Retaining walls on the tennis courts, the noise is going to transfer. I heard what she said about lighting. And I don't know about water and bathroom use and how that might be handled. I have a little concern that they're moving out of the area. I know that she said they would be back every four to six weeks, but I'm just wondering how that might impact, you know, the oversight that's going to be on the property. And I am sensitive to the fact that you like to keep the contiguous and the family and they want to get profits. But I'm just wondering if there is another way to achieve that, like maybe through renting the house or the second, the second use, the tourist home, with some agreed upon conditions that would give them what they need without maybe impacting quite the neighbors.
Anyone else for seventeen oh four, if you, yes, sir, state your name and district, please.
I'm Carlos.
Yeah, it's been a three minutes. We've said that at the beginning of the time.
Well, I'll give her back some of mine. We have concerns, not objections, because I just got the notice in the mail yesterday. We really hadn't had a lot of chance to consider this. My biggest concern is we are, this is to launch a different use of that property. We're going from a resident farm to an absentee landlord, making money out of, again, I only, I've only had it for twenty-four hours, but it says a convention center. I am immediately backing to this property. There's a couple of hundred-year-old stone wall that forms division between my property and theirs. We have heard ATVs running around back there. We have heard music, we have seen fireworks. Generally speaking, it's the kind of thing that a neighbor likes to ignore and stay friendly. But I am concerned about what we're releasing. What's the next step when the nephew inherits and decides, "Hey, I'm approved for a convention center. I'm going to host, you know, the Grateful Dead reunion here next weekend or something."
I'm in it, man.
I want to, I just, I am very concerned about releasing something that has a lot of local assurances about, "I don't intend to hold weddings during the week. I don't intend to let people stay up past eleven at night." How do I know that that next owner that has inherited this is going to have the same opinion about what to do with something that's some, that's a convention center? Thank you.
Mr. Carlos, which property is your favorite?
I am the thirty-four E, about the third.
I'm thirty-four E.
Okay, then I must be thirty-four F.
You're thirty-four F.
Thirty-four F.
Can you see that?
No, I have a cheek that's made of.
I can see it, we're in red talks.
Yes. If it's, I don't look at it. Anything online this month, whose property is yours?
I am actually on that map up there, I'm thirty-four E. But according to county records, I'll be listed as lot forty-four. The map's wrong for, so wrong, they can't fix it.
We understand.
Time out, it happens. I think that's also partly why there was delay in my other neighbor who was thirty-four G. I haven't heard of this until today.
Let's finish the public comment session.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Anybody, any other comments with regards to this application? Yes, ma'am, please, if you will state your name and district.
I'm in the class, Jackson District, also your neighbor. And thank you for the phone call. I didn't manage to get answered personally, but my concerns are similar to Stacey and my husband's, that, you know, we're concerned about what happens in the future once you let this go. The next owner, I'm not, these are concerns. And what powers does the county have to enforce anything that gets out of line? I value my night skies. I got these pieces of fire. I have horses, dogs, cats, rabbits, chickens, none of them like that noise. But, so these things matter. So we're just concerned.
Now, Carlos, seventeen oh four oh two. Gentlemen, do you want to hear the public comment on the seventeen oh four oh three? Do you want to sit together or do you want to go forward with this?
I see no reason not to go forward with this, or you wanted to tie all of your information on it.
I turn to the commissioners. Brown, this is in your district, would you like to go for it, or the public?
Isn't this the same property? No, you guys are going to do it. What was it you applied for about ten, twelve years ago on this property?
I don't think we applied for anything. We built a house, we built our house in two thousand and one. You didn't, I've never done a project like that.
Okay, you're on the next.
John. Well, I had a chance to visit the property. It seems, I mean, if there's a property in the county that fits this wedding venue concept, this one seems to be very high on the list as far as everything that, everything it offers and everything it looks to comply with. I am concerned about, you know, how the neighbors feel about it. But I guess I'll, I'll come back around to this. Let's, maybe some of the other committee members talk about what their thoughts are on conditions. But it was initially favorably disposed to, it wasn't, because of the size of the property or it was in relation to the adjacent property owners, its access, and many of the features that are highlighted here in the application. I think that the concerns about the fireworks and the concerns about the noise and the concerns about the lighting, I think, are all things that we probably need to talk about in a little bit more detail. Or we serve that for later, perhaps.
Thank you, sir. I also visited the property and share Mr. Lanzinski's perspective. I think in respect to some of the questions that arose, it is incumbent upon us to, to be sending the authority, we're again, just a recommending body of, we recommend approval with conditions that would be enforceable and if, and they would generally convey with the property and not the current owners. And if the, if the, if the people operating this business are in violation of the conditions in the permit, it would be revoked. So there are provisions and requirements for that. So I think this application has some of the same sorts of features that we sometimes grapple with with respect to, you know, concepts and priorities that are, that are associated with the current owner. And I think it is incumbent on us to make sure that we don't limit our consideration to the kind of personal preferences of the current owner. Because again, I think we are looking at this in a broader context. That being said, obviously, there's some real fundamentals from time to time. I mean, is that two-year, is that twelve-year? I think we need to put some, if we're going to go forward with that, we need, from time to time isn't going to cut it. And I, the way I'm reading the application, you know, a hundred and fifty guests typically means guests to the event. And we include others, or at least that's how I would interpret this in terms of what's requested. I think a hundred and fifty guest weddings are pretty, you know, fairly standard typical size. So I also share the view that the, the location of the facility and the parking and the access is pretty ideal and that it's in the, pretty squarely in the center of a very large parcel. So I'd like to think that we could work something out here that makes everybody okay with this. But I do think we have some details to work on.
Mr. Henry?
I think Mr. Lanzinski was very correct in his initial comments about basically how the size and the topo of the property and how it's been embedded. It's kind of, I'd say, very, looked at impact to anybody I've surrounded in the area. And when you look at the map up here, on the screen right now, it's very evident that this is the largest property in that area. is the largest property in that area. And I think that I would like to see it be maintained as long as possible, as it's two hundred and twenty-two acres, instead of the end cut up into at least eight parcels. And that zoning was different when all these lots were created here, along the young road and down six eleven. That was a different town in Rapid Hennet when you could have five-acre lots and, of course, in this day and time, this year, it was one big parcel, this year would not happen. So.
Mr. Moore?
I feel I'm in agreement with the general consensus here, which is that it is to very reasonable and proper use of the property. I think the aspect of our recommendation ought to be subject to the welfare and of the neighbors and minimizing whatever negative impact would happen to the neighbors. And it would seem to me, in this case, noise is probably the biggest one. And if that kind of outlook and care could be taken to minimize the noise and the intrusion on the neighbors, that should be part of any recommendation that we profit.
Mr. Brown, circle my turn to you.
I don't have any further comment, gentlemen. I have any comments to that.
Brown, this is in your, in your district.
And again?
This application's in your district. Any further discussion or?
No. I recommend that the, we recommend approval for it.
Mr. Brown, do you, any conditions associated with that, Mr. Brown?
So what conditions, are there conditions that came up?
I think one of these, Mr. Chairman, was a discussion about limiting the number of wedding, number of events per year. I mean, obviously weddings are seasonal, so you're going to have weddings in the wintertime. But on the other hand, we have multiple weddings during the month of May or June. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Can you ask the last question or she has one?
Um, I, like you said, anticipated weddings not happening in the winter and also probably not in the absolute heat of the summer.
Just speak up, please, a little bit.
I'm sorry. I think that we were thinking somewhere between six and 12 weddings a year. When we put in the number of 150, we were thinking of that, including band members or catering people or things like this. I respect the concerns about the noise. We would do anything to mitigate that, but I want to clarify, we're in the banding the hot pot center category, but we're not applying a no-to-be-shaved form for a hot pot center.
That's.
Okay. But that's.
You may answer, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown?
She said six to 12. What do you want to recommend? Twelve? Eight? Six? Well, we were going.
So, if I might, Mr. Brown, the other statements in the, in the permit about lighting and some of the priorities and the restrictions that the applicant articulated earlier about no additional buildings and no A T V fireworks, et cetera, that the things that she's put forward, would those be, would you recommend, would your motion have those be part of the conditions of the permit as well?
Here. Those items associated with the wedding events, not their personal lives.
Yeah.
Can you give them, Scott?
Also, the times, Mr. Brown, I believe she had times stated in there. With the kettle on, I don't know. So, Mr. Brown, in the Fletcher application, we talked about, we did 10 o'clock, the end of the events and lights out, conclusion of everything by 11:00. We support that. 10:00, 10:00, cease, and everybody out by 11:00.
You know, that's here. They, they talk about the lights, Scott, are part of the condition.
Just say that.
Well, yeah, I mean, the statement is, we will not install any lights for these events. Again, if we make the application description conditions of the permit, then that would be a binding constraint of the permit. So I do think the, the lack of lighting is, you know, one of the, of the requirements that.
That would be permanent lighting.
Permanent, right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And temporary lighting being pointed down. Again, these are all, the point here would be that the conditions are spelled out here to the, to the neighbor's point. The operation of this venue would have to comport with the description in this permit in order to continue by the final, which is or any future.
Right, a fifth of an angle, so it's heading laws of the naked.
Yeah, and that's, that's the condition.
Mr. Carlos, can you read back people's condition?
Motion to recommend approval for the application, i.e. no more than eight events per year, no A T Vs or fireworks, and that is associated with weddings, not applicable to their personal lives, a 10:00 P. end of event with a conclusion no later than 11:00 P. M., no installation of permanent lighting and temporary lighting to be downward facing.
And other restrictions as called for in the applicant, as called out in the application?
Should we not spell that out? We've done quite a few.
Can you roll this?
The application may not be allowed in the future. Well, I mean, my point is, it should be. I mean, we've started doing this as every one of these that we've approved. It's been my, my suggestion, and generally, I think the commission has taken it out, that the application, the description of the operation as in the application is, is part of the, is part of the condition. So that if somebody comes in with a wildly different approach and doesn't do these things, they're, they're essentially doing something different. They've changed the use. So I think we're at a risk of trying to enunciate all of them, and I, my preference would be to make the application as part of the conditions, the terms of the application.
Any objection?
No.
And a, one more question.
Yeah, I mean, that's, as stated, it says 150 guests. I guess technically you'd have to come up with a definition of guests, but it sounds like they were, they were okay with a more restricted interpretation of the 150. So I feel like it's su, the 150 guests is sufficiently clear. I mean, if it turns out that.
Fifty guests, just say 150.
I mean, that's what, that's what it says in the application.
One more time, Mr. Brown, real quick.
No more than eight events per year, no A T Vs and no fireworks, 10:00 P. M. end of event, conclusion no later than 11:00 P. M., no installation of permanent lighting and temporary lighting to be downward facing, limit of 150 guests and other restrictions as proposed in the application.
Perhaps the 10 o'clock should refer to the amplified music. I'm not sure what the difference between the event ending and people wrapping up. I mean, I think it's the amplified music that we usually.
And noise, there's a crunch on the neighbors, so maybe include that music in that.
So the way we said with Mr. Fletcher, it was the music will stop at 10:00 and lights off at 11:00.
Mr. Brown has a motion on the floor with current conditions read. Mr. Carlos?
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? Call favor.
Aye.
Going into the next application, seventeen oh four oh three, I will open that up through the public comment with regards to the, this is a tourist home, regards to the tourist home. Please state your name and your district if you have comment.
Karen Hunt.
Thirty minutes.
I mean, this is much shorter. Karen Hunt, I'm in Jackson District. I back up to this. I'm not sure I'm entirely as concerned about the idea of a tourist home, but as I have the wedding venue, I'd just like to understand and have maybe some more details clarified because the application just says short-term rentals, and I don't really know what that means. Maybe we could define that and just maybe the frequency, duration, and any conditions that might apply. They've said no more than 10 people in the application, but I didn't see any more detail about frequency, duration, or that sort of stuff. Thank you.
Yes. I close the public comment session for seventeen oh four oh three first time. For the commissioners, Mr. Brown, once again, this is obviously connected to the last application. Do you want to do a comment?
I have a seventeen oh three.
It's on my list, Kevin. Look at two. Seven, please, please. Here we go. Well, I'm locating that. Maybe I'll go to another commissioner. That's okay, Mr. Brown?
Okay, definitely. Mr. Burke? From my point of view, this is a very reasonable and proper use for the property. I can speak with some experience to this, as I am involved with a tourist home and have done it for probably two and a half years. My experience is that a tourist home is a less intense use than a fully occupied building and that the impact on neighbors and neighboring properties is less than the regular use. Generally, from my experience, most of the use will be on weekends. Generally, it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday type thing. Not necessarily, but that's probably 80%. As far as answering the question as short-term rental, that has to do with the fact that the rental of a property for periods longer than 30 days is allowed by Rite. And so that the short-term rental is what basically means anything less than 30 days, but I don't think it's, there's not a, a limit as to the duration. And from my point of view, if we are interested in promoting tourism in Rapid Hennet County, we are going to need places for people to stay, and there aren't a great many of these. And I would just finish by saying I don't know of any instances where people who stayed in tourist homes have caused an appreciable problem for anyone so far.
Mr. Brown? I have no comments. You will always, you've got to do your thing with Commissioner Remini.
Yes, absolutely. I have actually the paperwork here to file everything.
Mr. Brown?
I think the only thing that perhaps could, I'd like to see specified a little bit more is the, maybe an emergency contact. I think the neighbors have a point. There is, is a little different if you're not living at the property. You mentioned that you have a local resident cleaning and preparing the house for tourists. I don't know if you're anticipating that that person would also be the kind of person who greets the guests or whatever, but do you have a?
Yes.
Is the vision that there would be a local manager? And would that be the emergency contact?
We actually have three emergency contacts. So she would be one emergency contact, but she lives in Sperryville. So we have a second emergency contact who lives in Gas Pass, which is a community curator. We have a third emergency contact, and it's not in any particular order, right here, who is across the street neighbor, a longtime friend, whose family has been, gosh, on this property for generations, and is helping us with cows and looking after our animals as well.
So, so I guess just in terms of, you know, if there is some kind of issue and the neighbors want to call somebody, I think the challenge in this environment is, it's not quite sure, you know, it's not like.
They'll, they'll have actually listed instructions.
There will be a, there will be.
Yes. They'll see a list of instructions of the residents.
For the residents. That's important to note for the Airbnb's, I gather, and stuff.
Right.
But I'm thinking about, I mean, I suppose the alternative to the neighbors having a person to call, you know, related to the business, you should be aware that they don't have that number. They're probably going to call the sheriff's office instead. So I think that's.
Right, so probably the 19 people, because there are 19 homes that got letters, will give them an emergency contact with us. And we also are going to have our phone and our iPad set up so that it's a click of a button for the people that are renting the property to get in touch with us. I have a property in North Carolina. I control the thermostat and the alarm and the lights with my phone, and I can contact anybody who rings the button from there, and we can talk to each other. So I really do anticipate that, meaning it should be, we'd be able to have some access to me. And then they will also have a list of key emergency numbers, which sheriff could acquire from, anything that's needed. And I'll make sure that the neighbors have my contact number so that if there's a problem they can.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all I had.
And along that line, you actually have an area, a basement area, that's completely sectioned off or secluded, separated from the upstairs tourist home, which is an office area.
That's correct. Locked on both sides.
Right, and so there'll be perhaps somebody working down the office area periodically?
Yes, there are two issues there in my opinion. Privacy for our office and privacy for residents, because if you're renting a tourist home, you don't want somebody popping up from an office, right? So the door will be lockable from the tourist home side. The door will also be unlockable from our side, so our office is going to be secure. But as far as them having access to the office, they can come down to the walk-up basement entrance if they need it. And they can also call the office manager. So there'll be multiple ways that they can get in touch with somebody in the office during this.
My only point, Mr. Chairman, and just to echo what Mr. Henry said earlier and also with Mr. Burke, I mean, this is a, this is a type of property that I think we want to preserve here in the county. This is a, this is a type of use that keeps it from getting, from moving afar. And so, you know, for that reason, also meeting all the other criteria, the, the tourist.
Mr. Brown? I'm sorry, do you have a comment or any motion?
I'll make a motion. We recommend approval.
Gentlemen?
I'll second him.
Further discussion?
I would, again, request that we be explicit that the approval is, includes the provisions spelled out in the applicant, in, in the application, but I think we've already sort of done that with the other ones that I didn't seem to comply on most. That's all I had.
Any further discussion?
I started with mental exception.
Mr. Brown, is that a mental, a mental?
Mental super exception.
Is it my prerogative to propose that amendment or Mr. Brown? I think I was asking for it more in terms of clarification of the original amendment. Your origin, your amendment on the wedding venue included the description of the use as per the application. Does your recommendation, your motion for the approval of the tourist home also include the, the application provisions?
You have seconds.
I'll second him.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Next item on the agenda, special use seventeen oh four, Estes family apartment.
This is an application by Nevada Weaver Estes, owner of a property located at seventy-six Mount, seventy-sixth Mount Marshall Road, Washington, Virginia. Twenty-five point ten acres, taxman at nineteen parcel one dash one, zoned acre agriculture and a half in district, and she desires a special use permit for a family apartment. The use is allowed through code one seventy dash thirty-six A with additional standards under one seventy dash fifty-two and one seventy dash sixty-two G.
The applicant's here. You will.
Hi, Nevada Estes, Kansas District. Permit for a apartment above barn for my mother. It's, I readily, I think I complied with all of the issues. It's not as exciting as everybody else's application. Well, I hope, I hope. But I think the general thing is on the special requirements are like, it's under the twelve hundred square feet. It's an existing building, but it's also within the two hundred feet of the house also. It's probably the best location because it has water, electric. It means I don't have to build another structure on the property, which is nice because I don't think the neighbors, like, people build a lot of buildings. And it also is a building property, and that's the best location really for anything. Otherwise, you get all sorts of things like other gravel drives and nonsense like that. The other thing that I noticed is it's the same driveway coming in off of the state road. It's, and my mother's very quiet. So anyway, that's it. If you have any questions, I'm sure I've missed many things you want to know. Let me know. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to open up the public comment session for seventeen oh four oh four for public comments. With eight nine, I close this special use seventeen oh four oh four public comment. Turn to the commissioners, Mr. Henry, this is the new district. Yeah, I've got two questions for you.
Okay.
Very basic.
All right.
Exact distance from the proposed house to the main house?
A hundred and seventy feet.
Right. And the exact square footage of the living area?
The living area will be on our own down.
And I'm gonna jump a line to your third question. Do you have floor plan of the proposed area?
I have a tentative conceptual sketch because it's all gonna be based on the building and code if the barn itself was a core structure. So it might be a bit hard in this, and then if it is, I might, it's twenty-four feet by forty-five feet right now, which, I'm asking you to do the math, I'm really, I haven't really done it. It's a hundred, one thousand one hundred and seventy square feet at twenty-six by forty-five. And the only reason I did that upper number is I would, if ever, I want to make sure the hallway in the middle is wide.
So it's more by forty-five now?
Yeah, it's twenty-four by forty-five, and I'm gonna do a little bump out on the top and make it twenty-six by forty-five, and that would be super duper. And then it's still under the twelve hundred square feet.
It's right. Any other questions? That's, that's it. Bye.
Come on!
If someone may have just made a pass. No, I think Mr. Henry addressed the two, the two things I drove up from the property, the scene that the neighbors are particularly concerned. I think it's the question that doesn't meet the, the letter of the ordinance. We had this issue come up on, as recently as our last meeting. Definitely want to make sure that it's within the two hundred feet distance of the twelve hundred square feet living area, and those are my main concerns.
I echo that, Mr. Chairman. I had an opportunity to drive up there as well. Those were my two questions. Given that it's one driveway and your topography there kind of limits you from.
Yeah.
But you're a hundred and seventy feet, so you've got that covered. I really don't have any other concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, please. Questions, comment?
No.
Mr. Burke?
It seems like all the i's have been dotted and the t's crossed.
And I have no questions, so, Mr. Henry? I'd like to make a motion to approve this application as we said about it, that the final living area is total square feet or less.
I'll second him, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Moving along to old business. Mr. Chairman, just two little quick housekeeping items here to the top. On this application, you just did the work on the tourist home. It's three taxman numbers listed, it can only be one on the application application. So whatever, whatever taxman number that applies to, you can do that one. Can you make an exception to that? And I don't want to be the dead horse, but you know, our founding fathers who wrote these ordinance, they were very, very, they were good as our US founding fathers. And, and he was talking about Mr. Fletcher's application here, and additional standard seems to apply to field parties, and that's one of the separate items under the islands at the bottom that requires a special exception permit. Carnival, fair show, music festival, a field party, it seems that they simply identify field parties, right?
And that's what these would apply.
Would be a, a music festival or a show?
Well, I think if you look at the definition of field party, it's sort of an all-inclusive, if you look at the definition section.
But it was a separate item.
That's a good, and that's an interesting point, yeah.
So the supervisors might pump that out and may decide that field party, field party, this is not field party. So make their life easier. Moving on to old business, comprehensive plan and stuff.
We have two items under the comprehensive plan. The first one, it's Mr. Fred Peppin, who is here representing the town of Washington, and he came to see me because the town of Washington has been updating their plan, and of course, we have been updating ours. And there are a few items that are an overlap between theirs and ours. So I thought it was important to hear some of the changes that they are making for the town of Washington, and if that makes any difference to anything that you all wish to change in our comprehensive plan. So with that, I'm gonna head to Mr. Brown.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and be with you tonight. I have given Ms. Kaiser a piece of paper that's the left timetable that we use for our comprehensive plan. We started the process in October. We began actually the review of the conference plan in the spring of two thousand and fifteen. It got interrupted by a lot of issues surrounding the whole property, and we got back into looking at redoing the comprehensive plan in the early fall of two thousand and sixteen. And right now, we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule. We had finished draft, the third draft, which we had planned to have near the end of May. That's already done. If you go to our website, the town of Washington website, look under government, look under planning commission, you'll see the most recent draft of the conference plan. It says three point one on the plan itself is actually three point two. I've got to update the heading on it. We will, we will have a public meeting next Monday evening to continue work on the drafts and plan to have final version, final draft to the town council before the end of June. Then they will have a chance to do what public forums they wish to do, and then they'll have the final comprehensive plan approved at the end of this town council meeting. One of the things that we did with the comprehensive plan is we basically broke it down into three parts, and we did a lot of evaluation of different towns, similar to the town of Washington that we looked at. Gordonsville went through a very good process. We looked at theirs. I actually looked at one for Dukes County, Massachusetts, because that is a community on the island of Martha's Vineyard that is a tourist community, and they face a lot of the similar kind of issues that, that the town of Washington, actually the county of Rattan, faces. And there are five or six other comprehensive plans that we looked at. And there seem to be several parts that were really important. First is to identify what are the guiding principles that are driving the planning commission as they're going through this comprehensive plan. And so we had in our document a series of guiding principles that we looked at. We also placed at the front of the document what were the vision. And the vision and the guiding principles are not those of the planning commission members, but rather what we garnered from the public through the public forums that we did in October and through the meetings that we've had since that time. And that helped drive our document. And then the last part, which is similar to the previous comprehensive plan, is that we've taken important thematic components and done an inventory and analysis of those particular components, be they population, be they finance, be they user friendliness or so on and so forth. But then we also added what were the areas of concern that we had as members of the planning commission with the future, as it pertained to this particular area of the inventory. And finally, we have identified goals and objectives for each of these and put them in the comprehensive plan. And then down at the bottom, we've taken all these goals and objectives and taken them down to the bottom so that you can focus on those. And we were going to put together a series of prioritized action steps to present as a separate document to the town council in case they were to. So it was a, pretty much of a complete rewrite of the comprehensive plan and the process we used to do. We tried to be very transparent, tried to garner as much public input as we could, and we tried to work diligently. Have to answer any questions that you might have? Otherwise, again, I think you do not.
I'd like to add a couple of things. John, one of the things that they have in the plan is the zoning of the piece of property that we have back behind our buildings. So in the event that the board of supervisors is interested in doing anything, we would probably need to talk to them about the rezoning. So something for us to keep in mind. The other thing that has been discussed is some of the properties that are on the borderline of the town of Washington are also in the county, so people have their lines separated. That may be something that we need to address going forward. And then the other item that I've heard that is of interest is that the gateway to the town of Washington, which is coming in by the Washington Fire Hall, is really the county's, and that is their gateway, and so they may be interested in talking to the county about having that so that they can have a gateway the way that they choose to have it.
We're very sensitive to the whole issue about boundary adjustments, because there are some positives to it, and there is always some aversion to change that happens. The, if there are any boundary adjustments that we are going to recommend to the town council, there will be opportunities, I hope, that the public and especially members of this body will have to comment on those before the town council takes any action. The other thing I think is really important, and it comes through over and over in the comprehensive plan document, the draft so far, is it's important to have a very close working relationship with the county, because a lot of the issues that we face in the town are really microcosms of issues that the county faces. There is so much interaction between the county. We're grateful for all the support that we get from the county and having all the county office buildings in the town, and we're grateful for that as well on a daily basis. But more than that, we appreciate having a close working relationship with the county.
So may I just ask, did you, as part of this process, I don't, I don't think I heard you mention this, have you looked at and do you have any comments individually or as a body on the draft of the county comprehensive plan?
Or? I don't think that's within the scope of our, and so we have not. Okay. Any other questions?
With respect to this discussion about a boundary adjustment, you know, is that just, that just came up in conversation in the comprehensive plan charrettes or?
It has come up and, you know, as I understand, there was a famous mayor of the town of Washington by the name of Leggett, who was mayor some fifteen, twenty years ago, from what I understand. And he felt that the town of Washington should, should be, or his dream had been for the town of Washington to be the natural boundaries, he thought, was the town. You know, you have all sorts of legends and visions and perspectives. I suspect there are as many as there are people who live in the town of Washington and the people who live in the county of Rattan. I know one of the concerns that we identified as we were going through the comprehensive plan process is that the town of Washington does not control any gateway going into the community. So we have no signage for the town on two eleven, because none of those are in the town property. And considering the importance of tourism and walking into the town, we were kind of surprised by that. And I think there's also, I think a lot of discussion has been made specifically, as Ms. Kaiser said, about the properties at the corner of Route two eleven in Warhannock. I think that has caused a great deal of concern, not only for citizens in the town of Washington, but also for members of the county of Rattan, because that property, I think, is zoned commercial. And there is a concern as to what kind of building or what kind of use may be made of our property. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Gentlemen, the next panel of the gentleman has to do with chapter six of comprehensive plan. This is.
These are the last revisions that you had given us, given to me, regarding Mr. Irwin's changes. So this is the latest and greatest revision.
The language is written as opposed to what you agreed on last time?
Correct. And I think the question was proposed to Mr. Lysinski about whether you wanted to take this as a chapter and take it to the board, or whether you wanted to try to finish the entire document before sending it to the county.
And I believe you're gonna ask me.
And I believe you're going to ask me to check with the chairman to see what his preference might be. Chairman articulated that if you want to see chapter six, on the floor, the board.
Gentlemen, we okay with that? Ten buck cons? Gentlemen?
Just saying.
The same was motion.
Yeah.
Should we have a motion? Should we have a motion? Being done at that.
I'm sitting next to you, my opinion.
Gentlemen, we get a motion to, we're all agreeing with chapter six, to the board of supervisors for review.
Yes, sir.
So, is that...
Mr. Martin second. All players say aye.
Aye.
Close. There's your motion. Next item on the agenda is the amendments.
With red...
With reds. Was that 170-66K8?
Yep.
And you might take it from here or march to it.
Number 170-66K8. Do you have a problem with this?
Me neither.
It says issuance of a special use permit shall be conditioned upon the app containing a VDOT entrance permit as required by the road design manual, appendix F, and other applicable state law and/or regulation or otherwise compliant with the VDOT requirements. This is an additional standard for all tourist home, bed, and breakfast.
Okay, 24VAC30-73-4. You read that?
It's been a while since I've read it.
But it is a correct...
Yep.
Correct point of this.
Yep.
You read it.
That's how I'll go against it.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, make sure that we're allowing someone else.
My comment about this one, I may, is that... Sorry to jump in, but this somehow seems to imply that VDOT derives authority from us in some way. It seems to me that VDOT has its own authority to enforce its rules and why do we start trying to reproduce them in our zoning laws? I don't understand that.
We're not, it's other way around. In other words, you permit is conditioned on them approving what they have to approve, which you...
Most of the time.
Mostly time.
Most of the time, that's the recommendation anyway, so we're just going to codify that. It's the proposal anyway.
Okay. Yeah, I guess to me the question is whether the...
I mean, what happens a lot of times is sometimes it doesn't get in. Sometimes nobody brings that in.
Sure. So is the...
Well, so the proposal is just specify those, that's what applies, those two subsections and appendix F is the road design manual. So if it has a certain number of trips, most of these tourist homes don't generate, as Mr. Burris found pointing out, most times it probably produces less trips than a single family residence does, so there's no particular requirement. What we could have like this one that has five bedrooms and 10 people, that could generate more trips and it could require a small commercial entrance, but anyway. So in other words, what it's going to do is make sure that that's a part of that permit. Sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't.
And to be clear, we're not, but by this measure, suggesting that VDOT is going to do anything that they wouldn't otherwise do in terms of, you know, we say it's got to have, you know, a bigger sale. All we're saying is that needs to be...
Let me give, let me give an example of why I think it's a good thing to have it in there. Like you had a rezoning that then never got deferred than the planning commission. But if that's listed, then people know that's what they got to do. And so like for example, that one, they might have gone and said, can we comply with? It's just like the 1,200 foot on the family apartment. They know they don't, they got 1,600 or 2,000 square feet, they know that's not going to work. So the same thing applies here. If they see that's in the list of things they have to comply with, they can figure out before they spend $400 or $600 on an application and whatever other fees they got to pay, they can figure that out and go to the highway departments. I don't think the highway department charges to come look at it and tell you whether, maybe when, I don't know, with this application, I don't think there is. So they, they'll come and do that and then the applicant knows. And I just think that's, if you put it in the zoning ordinance that that's going to be a condition, then it's a way of telling people, sort of a checklist for them of what to do before they apply.
The only concern with that is, is that VDOT really likes it to come from me versus having everybody out there calling and applying. So it takes that out of the equation for...
Well, you still, I'm not saying that they're going to call, but I'm just saying that they know it's a requirement.
We do this and we should continue to do it, so it's okay. Okay? Is that a consensus?
Yeah, I don't have an issue.
John?
You know, if we're doing it already, if it's nothing that, if it's not over and above, I mean, if we're just codifying what we try to do every time.
We do it every application, so it's like you're...
You've got the thing in front of me here, I'm just trying to find the section four, but...
The only thing that would concern me being this specific, if for some reason the document numbers changed, then you know, our ordinance would be out of sync or something. I mean, that's, those are the kinds of reasons you don't want to start having these same things repeated in that way.
Just put as now or here after amended. It's now in existence or it's here after amended? We got a lot of stuff, we got a lot of state code stuff that we're fixing up and that's in there.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it. I don't know if it weren't quarters of 10.
So we still want to check and pick the numbers out and leave them in or what?
No, leave them in.
If we, the applicant has to obtain a VDOT permit, I think it's going to go about saying that it's going to be applicable to these sections written in here or not.
And it says, and others applicable state law or regulation. So it covers what you said if it changes.
Section four has, types of entrances has it broken down to commercial, commercial, moderate volume, low volume, commercial, and private.
Section 40, you're talking about?
Uh, section, section four of the VDOT road design manual in appendix F.
Right.
Which specifically addresses entrance design.
Right.
Because that's what this is dealing with, it's an entrance permit. And so here it has all the entrance design principles and it hasn't broken out into those four categories, private, low volume, commercial, moderate volume, commercial, and commercial.
What are you, we've had this language, I mean, we don't, I've never heard us quote this section.
Right. He says about VDOT.
He says about the VDOT requirements. And if we can codify that by saying that that's mandatory, I mean, it's part of that checklist as you said, Dan. I don't know that the, putting this in here will have us continue to review this, it may catch us down the road if this changes. If we just make it simple as saying, obtain a VDOT entrance permit as required by the road design manual.
That's fine.
Wonderful, I think that's fine. I didn't say nothing else. I think it gives us, I guess, a little flexibility. Well, I'm making a recommendation that we take out appendix F, 24 and whatever that is, and 24 follows.
Actually, it could be road design manual or other applicable state law, right?
I think that...
I like it.
You're on.
Right, wonderful.
So we're all...
Yes, sir.
Gosh, and then take the law, the change around. And Jase Brady gave me his proxy, so I'm for it.
Just go ahead. I'm making a few notes in the next...
170-66K9, additional standards for all tourist homes, bed, and breakfast, and houses. The BZA or board may impose additional appropriate conditions to ensure that the permitted use shall not generate noise, vibration, glare, odors, or other effects that are unreasonably interfere with any adjoining landowner's enjoyment of his or her property, or residents including but not limited to. A guest of lodgers shall be allowed only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. The maximum number of adults permitted at any one home shall not exceed twice the number of lodging units. And limited lodgers shall be notified of any applicable law, local noise ordinances, and that violation of any such ordinance may result in fines and penalties. D, for non-owner operated occupied uses, the operator or his designated shall provide contact information to a limited lodger for the purpose of allowing the lodger to contact the operator or his or her designated regarding issues or complaints. The operator shall post or provide within the residential dwelling unit a clearly visible list of emergency information, including emergency numbers, emergency exit information, and the location of fire extinguishers or pool fire alarms in the residential dwelling unit offered for limited residential lodging purposes and the common area of the building. F, the operator shall ensure that each unit is equipped with functioning smoke and fire detection systems and carbon monoxide alarms as required by applicable law codes for the residential dwelling unit. And G, the operator shall provide evidence that he or she has no less than $500,000 of liability insurance covering the limited residential lodging use, or that each limited residential lodging use is conducted through a hosting platform that provides equal or greater coverage for such use. Depending for violation of any such conditions imposed by the board of the BZA shall not exceed $200 for violation.
The word "of" is missing there before "any." Depending for violation of "any" is missing. The "of" got dropped. It's online.
Yes, it did.
There's also an extra period.
Oh, I believe there's also an extra period at the end.
Yep.
So this is the stuff that was in that bill that got passed last year, subject to being re-passed this year. And this, all these things are word for word out of that state law that were reserved to localities. That was all that the localities were going to be able to regulate, but then it never got passed again this year. So personally, I think it's a good idea, it's good risk. But the reason that was in there was so that we would be regulating the things that they left us to regulate, but now it's sort of not there so anyway. I believe it anybody.
Number eight, 9/8 needs to come out.
What?
9/8.
Yeah, I agree.
Excellent. You can only visit somebody at 12:00 a.m. You could have a lodger and goes over and takes Mr. Conick out to dinner at the end and the conick stops by his little house at 9:00 p.m. for one more drink before he goes home, so, you know.
What?
You know, so that doesn't, you can take that out.
It changes the tide. I'm sure the zoning administrator will be out, you know, with a lot.
Yeah.
What a change. We'll go to him, he'll be out to the dinner.
What a change. Maybe, yeah.
You can take it. I just copied that.
Gentlemen, we're all agreeing to taking that in?
You got time.
Just need one big.
So re-moderate them all.
That's beautiful.
Yeah. Any commentary on B? C, unlimited. Or limited lodges. Be notified of any applicable ordinance. I mean, I can't do without saying that.
Well, I think putting a burden on the owner to make people aware of it is a good thing, I mean, I'm fine with it. I actually don't have any problem with any of the others personally.
What is, what is the, is I correct? Is that a...
Which one?
I, the penalty violation, is that, that's a civil penalty, civil fine?
Problem raised, anyone?
Well, the state code, I think, says that, it's in the state code, what...
You think?
What, you think?
Well, I'm sure that's where this came from. In other words, I think it's $250 a day is what for general zoning violations, and that's what's in our ordinance, so this, really, it's redundant, but...
So this was part of that legislation that really didn't, this is...
It got passed and signed, subject to being re-passed, I never heard of that, but anyway, this year, and then they sent it to an asset with that other one.
So without this, we have the standard civil penalty law.
Pretty much.
Which is, which is 250 after, so...
I guess I would suggest then that for simplicity sake, not repeat it. I guess we take out...
I don't have a problem.
Gentlemen, we're taking that I?
Sure.
The first technically now, G, I think.
Can we, gosh, nobody actually made the motion to re-moderate that. Ms. Kaiser?
170-120 nonetheless, every application required under the provisions of this chapter shall be filed with the zoning administrator. No application shall be considered officially on file or shall be advertised for a public hearing until the application and all required accompanying submissions, including a site plan if required, are submitted to the zoning administrator, and all delinquent bill state taxes are paid as required by Virginia Code. When the application is complete, it shall be referred to the officer, body, or agency having jurisdiction to act on the same.
That's you. So that's just the board's involved, it's just a clarification.
We're the most... I mean, I think the only, the main thing here is the clarification about the delinquent bill state taxes, which is something you've been saying, you like, you should adopt that, so I'm fine with it.
So since we have all the smart minds in the room here, this new legislation said that we're allowed, if we want to, to establish a registry.
But that, but I don't think that's a zoning thing. I, you're allowed to have the registry, but I don't think it's a zoning thing at all, it's just a registry. But I think Sharon Dodson made some...
Yeah, the commissioner of revenue thing, and she said that she's already tracking all these and she's got all, you know, she's online and this and that. I'm just curious as to your opinion as to whether or not you think the county needs this registry.
Well, honestly, you know, what...
If it's already, sure, we can ask that question.
It means somebody's going to have to do it. And we got, we got Sharon's doing it anyways, from what I understand. Number two, they're paying the tax to the treasurer, so Debbie Nick sort of got a reflection of it. And third, Melch Carter is, she also checks all these things to make sure that they have the state licenses and the other part of this, so we already sort of have three people that are already doing it.
And the board decided that they weren't going to do it. It says a reasonable fee. And Sharon determined that the reasonable fee was $35. So for the time it would take to go to all the trouble to make people register, it's not, it's not going to pay for itself. So the board determined that we weren't going to do the register.
So before we get off this thing, I got one more thing that came up in some discussion I remember too, but look on the chart...
Let's finish this last one here.
Well, I want to add one. Oh, go ahead.
So this last one here, playing this thing there, I'm okay with the way it's written?
Aye. So this other thing is in the chart on 170-36, you know, the chart with all the permitted uses, and it's in the, in the... And it's in the, I don't know. Okay, there's the key and then there's residential uses. It's on the next page, commercial, educational, institutional uses. If you go down to residential, medical care facilities, which is two from the end, for those of you that are looking at it, there's just kind of a screwy thing here that, um, medical facility with less than ten beds is one category. And then a medical care facility with greater than ten beds is another one. So if you have exactly ten beds, you're out. So you have to either have eleven beds or nine beds, but you can't have ten beds. You're not gonna, so that doesn't make any sense. So you have to change one of them to ten...
What number seven?
Uh, then, or... Subsection B. Subsection B and it's one seventy dash sixty-six B. I don't know, they're not numbered. So it's the two ones, medical care facility. So I would propose to make the first one ten beds or less. Or you can make the other one ten beds or more, but you gotta have some, one of them's gotta stay ten beds. Flip the coin.
I think we got through this topic. We're closing our business tonight.
One question, please.
One question going back to business with John or Debbie. If you're with the registry, is it a voluntary payment each month of your fees? Of your lodging tax?
No, because that's in the ordinance, it's not taxed. That's the county ordinance, so you gotta pay.
I think it's quarter.
So she's not keeping her registry anymore? The initial revenue is not keeping her registered anymore? She doesn't matter, she needs to contact each month, each quarter?
Well, the treasurer does that. Sharon makes sure that everybody's registering appropriately. And now that we're all connected, we're sending out every month who gets approved and who's denied, so that that goes to the Commissioner of Revenue. She looks for new people. So she has a running list of who's approved and not. That goes to Debbie Nick and then Debbie makes sure that they get the payments on a quarterly basis, so...
Debbie notifies us before the due date, so that we get it in on time.
So the only thing we're doing is deciding not to take the option of creating additional registries.
I mean, in the fact that if somebody gets a permit, you got a list of all the permits.
Right.
You gonna vote to advertise these, all these amendments for the upcoming next one? After we finally finish? After only fourteen months?
We'll wait a month, two, three months.
Yeah, okay.
Good, because I'm gonna fix them.
That's what I want, I do actually.
General, I have a motion to... Is that it? Am I gonna have a second?
Aye.
Before we, we have a second.
Um, I just, I don't know what the schedule is going to be between Lauren and I to get that done. We'll have to advertise a lot of...
I mean, it's already done. You have to get this updated list.
So I'm going, we'll either do it in June or July.
We need a motion to just accept this to... We can get that as... It's been a long time for that. I hear a motion. All favor, that's a lock.
Aye.
Move. You want to come?